All right, let's call the meeting to order at 6:30. Thank you everybody for coming out. It's nice to see the crowd. Nice to see people. I know it's never gonna have to start. First item on the agenda is to approve minutes from the regular meeting on April 12th, 2026. Was it fair? Okay, Alliance of Citizens, any business coming before the board?
I would. Westbrook Road.
Yeah. Okay.
There was a utility hall behind mailbox 166.
Okay.
It's that four by four got in the road. It got snapped in half. I don't know if it was ever sourced or CLP came out and replaced the pole. They put the pole right on the road.
Okay.
All the neighbors who blame, they split the plan and tried to get it to do this. Two years ago, somebody finally hit that hole and snapped. They came out and they drilled holes in it. They put a four by four in it, they put render drive.
Yeah.
They can really narrow it down. Last year, they found a new couple of holes. They just would be bringing half about eight inches. They were putting it in, I asked them, please move the whole hole back. They're going to come home. And the best of all, it's coming up the road. I had a lot of help my grace because there's just not enough of them here. Westbrook Road on the north side of Bushy Hill is a lot wider than the south side. Somebody's gonna get hurt there one of these days. Please would you get them to get out there?
Well, take a look. You sure it's ever sourced and not frontier?
I don't know who it is. It's an utility hall. I don't know who belongs to whether it's frontier or ever sourced. But you can't miss it. I mean, there's a four by four there that they got. It's rendered drive, it's got a thousand pieces of wood and stuff. I need to draw the money here.
Oh, I know. I've already had a little live crack with them. Yeah, I'll contact and see. Thanks. Anybody else?
Here again, I'm sure what?
Thank you.
Do you have a permit for the readers?
Haven't heard that.
Can we follow up with that? I mean?
We do. Yes, I'll call them again. We do follow up.
It's getting worse.
I understand. I understand. If you, at least when we're out there, you see what I'm talking about, what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have to probably follow them on social media if they saw something that I don't know where or not. Apparently, the little we got a multi-day celebration of death. And a whole lot of families got $90,000 permits. I think it kind of looks kind of unchartered.
I heard about that, but I don't follow Facebook.
I didn't know. I think it's about the same. It kind of makes it kind of look bad.
Let me respond to it because I did hear about it and looked into it. All of that, that all occurred when we had three policemen on that day because of the marathon that ran from Essex up to landing it back. Not all of our policemen that were on duty were the race. Someone called in a complaint to the troop. The troop sent a trooper out who's not, you know, who knows, maybe familiar with you or not. He saw people park, double park, parked in the middle of the road facing the wrong direction and started issuing tickets. We subsequently spoken and said, look, it's a one day a year event. You really ought to talk to somebody who's local before you start doing that. But it was done. Wasn't any of our guys. It was somebody, whether he's from here or not, somebody from Troopett. I understand what the concerns are. We have to do the best as well as we can. There was not any of our police officers involved.
Maybe you can think of something that somebody can put that out and try to tell the people. Should people be aware of it?
Yeah, I don't. I don't think Facebook is the place for any correspondence like that. Most of the concern that they call. Facebook, it's just gonna, it's just gonna, it's just a rabbit hole. I'm not gonna do that. I appreciate it. But yes.
Um, I want to talk about this. There's a shooting range, constable's already in the river town dump. Years ago, the city, there was a constable's shooting range at the end of Caesar Square Road. Not really proud of it. And given shutdown because of that day. I really don't think it's a great idea to have the PDA come in here and shut down a second month in town. I think it's something that the town should do itself. The other concern I have about it is that. The army is a threat. It was a 15 mile radius. And there's water at the base of that, which means that lead can get reached into the water supply and then it goes empty. Also, we have our. Big horse farms on both sides of the dump. I don't think our water is full now does anything running in the water. But the other one does sometimes have little trails. Those horses are not trail horses and if they keep a shooting. I, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not a safe bit. And as I say, we've already had one, the constables shut down years ago. And I understand you folks are looking into the research on it, but it's absolutely.
So I understand. I appreciate expressing your concern again as I, as we email back and forth. I did hear all, for two weeks, I asked you to come down and talk about it. Happy to, I'm happy to talk, I'm happy to talk about it right now. In the meanwhile, in the whole course of this thing, we had visited the site with the town engineer who's been in contact with DDP. We satisfied all of the DDP requirements, number one. Number two, we're not going to be using lead baseball. It's going to be using a composite ball that I can't pronounce the word, what they're called, but it's a French. Starts with an F and an R and an A. I don't know how to pronounce it. But they're bullets that do not reach anything into the ground. DDP is perfectly fine with it. If in fact, we do use lead bullets, but we're not planning on it, but we're going to do this precaution anyway, just in case. The requirement is that we spread some lime in with the soil, the sand and gravel that is the backdrop for the tar. So it will abate any kind of lead that reaches it. That's the DDP's suggested solution for that. I have in fact spoken to the neighbor who abuts the property, one of the horse farms. And we are working out how we might be able to work this together. I told him very clearly that if this is going to upset his farming, then we will, 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 will work towards a solution. Whether that's no, no shooting range or not. He's amenable to having conversations and we're going to continue that conversation. This is a range that is set up not in the town dump, but on the garage. It is, it is something that is utilized for training purposes only. Only when there's a certified instructor or trainer on premises. We happen to have a certified instructor as one of our constables. So that's a positive for us as opposed to driving an hour each way and a thousand dollars each time. You can have four or five shooting events down here, train events at this site. And it works for, it gives us better trained constables. There's no environmental problem and there's no issue with the dump with the neighbor thus far. So that's what we've done and that's how we resolve this. And if we continue the conversation, we will make sure that it doesn't bother. Because then we'll work, we'll work together to come up with a more amenable solution. But this is where we are right now.
Do you have the material of the town engineer about DDP environment?
No, no. I have a conversation. I went there with the town engineer. He spoke with the DDP.
You have nothing in writing?
Nothing in writing. I think that you should call. You said for the last two weeks that you were pointing to. I think that you should. I really think that you should because as far as I'm concerned, it is resolved. I don't think you're asking for resolution. I think you're asking for us to close it. And at this point, I'm not prepared to do that. I'm working with everyone that we can to ensure that this is being managed and run the way that it should. By resolution, if you mean closing, then that's not where we're at. And that's what we're, that's what we're doing.
Is there a reason why?
Yeah, because. Because I spoke with the town engineer, town engineer spoke with DDP. You guys are going to require us to get it in writing and that's what, it's not a big deal. I know you would like it.
And I also want to know, because that's town property. That's, when was that ever okay by the town?
Those needs be okay by the town for us to have a different activity, town activity on the town property. It's like asking who's going to, who's going to pave the town garage, an additional part in my position, I go to the town. It's not required. I don't think it's something, frankly, it's not something I really want to put out there. We've got a shooting, something that helps the town be a safer town, saves us a little bit of life.
So do you have a certified trainer, we can use that?
Yes, it's only for our constables, our own constables, not inviting any other towns to come use it. We have a certified instructor on our staff. Like he's, he's going to be, nobody's going to go up there without, he's going to be there for you to track.
Certified public, so anybody in town?
No, no, our staff.
Yeah.
It's not, won't be.
So would you say that's DPO police, the constable ball?
Yes.
No safety?
Probably the resident trooper. I'm gonna guess it's four to six. They don't, they don't have to go up there once a week. It's just, they need to practice to stay certified. I imagine it'll be no more than four or six.
At the, the other town meeting, the court selection meeting, I mentioned a bunch of possible places to put the money. And, but when I looked at the limits, we have a map, which has a map. And I'm. I was just a little shocked that $75,000 for arts and breadth for a music festival. That's what it said.
They have to go through us, they have to go through voter finance, they have to go through the town.
Okay, my comment was yeah. The food bag only got something like ten. Tri- pound food got something, meal set got something. But the total of those three things, because they're really good jobs people that need, especially the food bag. Didn't fall off the total.
Jane, that was the $10,000 food bag request.
Well, I think they should request.
Well, you should call them and ask them to request it.
They figured out that was all they could do.
Okay.
Now really thinking of a total of music festivals that is greater than the total for food bag, tri- pound meal.
Thank you. Can I jump in? Here's a paper from that meeting with the numbers that was presented on the select. There were just arbitrary numbers. They weren't set in stone numbers. They were just guidelines that these people had asked. I know you missed out on me. I'm sorry I didn't get back to you. But these were just numbers to work off of. Nothing's cast in stone that we're going to give A, B, C, D. Those are just guidelines. And I think I have notes here for my questions that evening from that. So trust me, when it comes time to start giving up that money, we're already doing the right thing for as many people as possible. Last thing we want to be is something that was like the other town dump in I-95 there. So we will do our best to make as many people happy as possible.
Is your proposal going to the board by next morning? One other thing, and I know that there is a thing to do about it because the muster is really run by the Deep River. I've been wrong for, I don't know which one. But to me, that's a wonderful music festival and I think you should expand on that. You think it's a town, you know. Which is a little day.
People in that story, people who don't know the musters here?
My, my, I think it was my sis, somebody I knew was at the Copper Beach. And I had no idea that the muster was here.
It's been going on for how long? I just find that hard to believe.
I know, and it's always the first sad baby to laugh. I've been thinking the same. No, I mean, it's not, it's a dual.
That's not a town.
It's right. That's why it's, I say it's. It's just that it'd be nice to expand on that and hopefully. But as I say, it's not run by.
Anyone else?
I have one question on that one. Now, is there a certain, you got to clear it here because what I heard is that a certain percentage has voted Rivercock?
No, a certain percentage has been requested by the. I'll clarify it for you. We talked about it a couple of times already, but. The money that was distributed by the federal government went to towns and to counties across most of the country. As you're aware, Connecticut is not, does not have a county government. So the federal government, in their wisdom, decided to give all of that, they just took all the county money and gave it to the towns. So we, we were lined up to get $650,000 as a town. And then our county was going to get a whole bunch of more money. Did the math on that county and gave us another 650, which was then distributed to the county. So what the Rivercock has asked is for regional projects owned, not for Rivercogs to spend as they will. When they come up with a regional project, David asks for 15% of that county sum. That comes to $48,000 for us. Where they're about, not even Steven, but 48,000 or so. It might be in pretty. Essex has already voted to contribute 40, whatever their 15% is to the cog for regional projects. And only for regional projects that affect Deep River for us, for that is Essex. If they're going to do a project for Portland and Promille, we're not going to contribute for it. If they're going to do something for the region that surrounds us and includes us, then we, if, if the town decides wants it, we will. Now Essex put a contingency on theirs that theirs will only go to the Rivercock if Deep River and Chester do the same thing. And on all towns that do the same thing. No, I'm sorry. That's, that's when we spoke. That was, that was 40. You service, you're, sorry, that was not, they asked for 15%. We don't have to give you 15%, we don't have to give them any. But I put it on because I think the idea is worthwhile. Rivercock does an awful lot for us. And if there's a project that, that they need to pay a consultant for that involves Deep River and can benefit Deep River. And I think it's worth the investing. So I mean, it's not up to me to decide. It's up to the board of selection or finance in the town. I hope that.
When, when we did that proposal?
Some of them will go relatively soon. I really want to get through the budget and we're very close to that. So we've been pretty focused on that for the last four months. Anyone else?
One more thing. I have, I'll call your, your parents.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Patrude Naget.
Listen, I would like to say that Friday, May 27th, for all veterans of Chester, Essex, Deep River. There's going to be a practice at John Wissam Junior High School, 7 o'clock. Do not have to be a region member and it's available for Essex, Chester, Deep River. And there'll be a short program. There we move to the high school, the bigger program up there and refreshments. And then we go to the elementary school. That's Friday, May 27th. Okay, what time? 7 o'clock. Yeah, in the morning, yes. That's for veterans. Like I said, you don't, do not have to be a region member. This is available to all veterans of Essex, Chester, Deep River. Okay, thanks. I left my glasses in the truck.
You need readers? Take mine, Greg. The readers. Walmart specials.
Oh, Jim, thank you. I can't see you on this, but I can see you. All right. The name of Herman Ranch Jr. has been added to the Korea War ring of the, of the memorial. And the name of John Beveridge Jr. has been corrected. I think that's six names since the committee was formed by you that, that we've added to Korea and Vietnam. A lot of thanks to Phil Shing about your graphic design on Portland Street because he's done it. No, no charge to community whatsoever, you know, so it's very nice. I wish the granite blocks were as cheap as the fixing the names on the Korea and the, right. We have three names to be added to the, to the blocks that are missing that we found out over since we've done the platform. We have several names that are misspelled. And we have several names that are double bricks. Okay. Now, I was hoping to get this done by Memorial Day of this year. But here a little while ago, Kathy Schultz put the bug in our ears about the Merchant Marines.
Yeah, that's what I'm happy to get any response to that.
Well, I have the name of two gentlemen. A Tom Lusson and a Harold Tom Lusson and Henry Larson. Those are two gentlemen that served in the Merchant Marines in World War II. Now, back in the.
Relation, right? That's your dad? Yeah, I figure back.
Now during, during World War II. We lost 3,500 merchant ships, just in the Atlantic, at 72,000 merchantmen. Back in the eighties, Congress bestowed upon them the same benefits that service members get. Only Merchant Marines in World War II. So from December 7th, 1941 till September 2nd, 1945, these guys get the same benefits as anybody else that, that served. So what I am basically looking for, if there's any more names from Deep River. Oh, if there's any more names from Deep River who served in the Merchant Marines. Please give Joyce a call at the town hall. She doesn't have enough to do. Or give me a call, please, at 860-526-5270. Again, Merchant Marines, World War II, 860-526-5270. Now, I'm hoping to get this done by Veterans Day. I don't know where you guys are up doing the slate around, around.
Yeah, we're looking for proposals still.
Yeah. If, if, if we can't coordinate this, then I want to move ahead with, I want to move ahead with the bricks.
Yeah, I think that's probably practical to do. And you know, we might be a little mister miz ar up after that. We've got a lot of money that we could use for it too. So you know, the bids are coming in high and people crazy business.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's crazy. Yeah, that guy, we got that platform done a couple of years ago. And we did because it would probably cost us another, another 30% right now. I mean, I can't even, I can't even get contractors to do their telephone calls right now, you know? They're just, they're just so busy. Yeah.
I know that the post guard was involved in the alarm.
Yeah, they're on, post guard is on, 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 all, all. The post guard, the army, the Navy, the Marines, the Air Force, they're all, they're all on the, the ways. Oh yes, they are. Oh yeah. Yeah, yeah. Now we're going to be adding the Merchant Marines. And what we're going to do, when we do the granite blocks for the Merchant Marines, we're going to put in, rather than just the names, we're going to put in Merchant Marine, World War II, and that, and that name. So that, that's, that was one of the nice things about that bronze plaque that we put in. It says honoring all, all those who also served, you know, so there's, there's no distinction there. But the Merchant Marine will have Merchant Marine, World War II, and the name.
Yeah, that's great. Great job.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thankfully, next item on the agenda is municipal action, rotation of votes, vote back. So we have a couple of numbers here.
I've got some handouts.
Can you turn the computer back on? There you go.
Here's, thank you. This is close. You think this is close? I mean, so I'm going to explain what this is and stuff. We don't have these available publicly yet. That's gonna, several more here. I don't like that. Flange.
Well, does this say draft that or something?
This one does not. Because we want to, this is a final, I want to type one.
Yeah.
So it is draft. The rest of these say draft because they're not as far. I would say that there could be some minor revisions in the code. And based on feedback and further review by council. But now. The wall I'm handing is, it may be where there's an ordinance or there's a, there's a ballot. I think it was in November of 2020.
I think so.
To establish an ethics commission. And because of that, an ordinance was, was drafted and put into, put into play. The ordinance, I think, is up on our website, on the town website. I have a copy of it here. That established the ethics commission. Right now, we have five regular members in the office. My name is Drew Nemoy and I'm the chair of the committee as of earlier this year. Joan DePillo is the co-chair. Kerry Janson is the secretary. Robert Herrick, who's by RJ. And then also Josh. And then also Joshua Ruddy is a member, and then John Green and Robert Dinkins are all.
I know you guys have been working very hard. And very diligently to get to this. So I'm looking forward to seeing.
So the three things that I'm handing out here is, the first one is the code. And we'll review that in a second here. And I'm not going to train it. I'm just going to give you kind of what it is. The second one is um the one that I'm thinking of now is this is the second one was uh. Policies and procedures to file a complaint. Initially, we had that in the code, but we're not going to get that off your gate, but we can definitely add the most changes. So we lifted that out of. We lifted that out of the code itself. And referenced it in the actual code document. Uh sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So if we look at the um.
I'm going to do this right now.
So if we look at the first document, which is called Town Deeper, Native Code of Ethics. What this is is basically talking about our policy purpose, which is. To apply to county officials, officers, and contractors and establish suitable ethical standards for all these for such individuals. By providing access to the topic. That's what all this is about, is defining what conflict interest is. And and establishing a code that you should do things with. That's what it is. It's not um uh. And as far as applicability, uh it's section two, number one. That defines what person's governed by this code is. So that's the scope of who this code applies. And throughout the document, we'll you'll see the term person governed by this code referred back to that section two, number one. This code is not applicable to conflicting, whole one part of any other labor agreement or contract that speaks that. So anything that I would say. Given section three. Section three is all that. So you know, you're referring to the rest of the code. Complaint, confidential information, confidential, that's a good one, confidential interest. You need your family on record, personal benefits, interests. Probable cause. And financial, it's all simple. So anytime you see those terms in the code, it refers back to the definition of what they are, how they define. This is very challenging for us because none of us are lawyers. And this is very legal, right? So this is a big stretch for all of us. Uh we've been consulting with attorney Marsh on a couple of occasions, and she provided some excellent feedback, and we took a lot of it. And um that was that was very helpful. Section four is kind of the nature of the whole thing. Section four talks about a conflict, what is it? You see, they are saying a whole subsection in section four talks about persons governed by this code and look at their definition. Data, data, these points. It's amazing how much conversation a single word in in a document can involve. So we had we had a good like, I wouldn't say twice, but spirited discussions on one or two years. So uh and then there's a section, section five. And it always talks about is that, you know, if you've got inside information on something. Don't use extra advantage. Uh at least within the first year after you still make your point. That's kind of what that's all about. Um and you know, making confidential information when when possible, that's interesting. Section six talks about members, appointment qualification, and and compensation. Again, our compensation. Zero. We didn't have it as well. But it talks about, and then a lot of this uh stuff in section six is taken right off of the ordinances. Secretary's definition of a quorum. People in the commission, you can't hold political office, you can't put political signs on our yard, and we can publicly support a candidate going away together. So that kind of stuff is in. Want members of the commission to be neutral.
I said one one quick question. Back on page three about the two gifts.
Yeah.
Um you have invited in private residence. So if I have a a party at my house, and I want to invite a town official or someone that serves and I use for commissions, they can't come. That's what that's saying?
We need to accept that. Bobby, do you remember what that is about?
I think I think that's, you know, I'm all for ethics, one hundred percent. Again, if I'm having a Christmas party or a Fourth of July party, um I want Ronnie Larson over. It says a meal provided in a private residence. That's my house. So I don't invite whoever. It's basically saying it's an ethics, right? How I might think. Yes, that's what it says.
If you were having a meal at my house, it would be worth more than a hundred bucks.
But it doesn't have any value on it. It actually it actually does. Maybe a gift makes us a little more value than a key move to that. And it says the gift does not include.
Oh, you're right.
I think if you go back to that, it does not include.
So this does not include.
These are the exclusion sections.
Okay. Oh, okay. Anything over a hundred dollars over the course of a year does not include A through now.
Correct.
Reconsidered.
So that doesn't include printed or recorded information to manage the government action to follow.
Right. So, yeah. And and I think, Jay, no offense to anybody here, um let's let Luther make his presentation. There's questions from the board selection. That was fine. Just we'll go to the town meeting. The code. Correct. There's going to be plenty of opportunity for that question. But let's hone this down before we get to one.
Thanks for pointing that out. Section six is all about the ethics mission. We talked about that. And again, I'm taking from the ordinance. Um we're going to double check the measures, same with what the ordinance. Uh spelled out. Uh section seven was a piece that we lifted out. We lifted out and don't want to see the ethics mission general procedure. Uh this is this is this is draft. We're gonna have to go through this with the with the fine. You can see it's in the process of being red light now because of the red lights up in there. And there's going to be more. Right? But the reason, the town will saber for this, and we thought it was a good idea because. A lot of people embed this into the code, but then what happens is if you if you realize that your general procedures for filing complaints and for hearings and for. You know, notifications and the whole that whole review process, if that changes, which it will, because we're not going to get it right for stuff. Then you have to go and re-ratify the, you know, the entire code. So we lifted it out and put it we put a base for each city, had a commission show about procedures and regulations, uh legislation and handling complaints because those are the state by the practice is. Um commission show also about proceeding for iteration where by all persons governed by this code may request and receive advisory opinion. So. A person governed by this code, if they if they are planning to do something, then I'm sure this is an ethics violation or not. They can they can uh request an advisory opinion where the commission will say, okay, yes or no. So we kind of like to see what you plan to do is consider that. That's what that is. Um there's a section for appeals, the the validity, and then the data effect. So that. Raptor sort of like you, but we're not going to keep that up with you too. Review. This is something that we we hammered out for quite some time. We think it's pretty close.
Yeah, it is.
It is. If you look at what other towns and municipalities have done, we look at C伯. We look at that, oh gosh. Rob and Rob and several others. They're all very similar to this. And it's basically. Definitions. Let's just go, who does this code apply to? What is the um what defines town commitment? And what's the complaint process? The other the other forms, I just I I don't want to bring any, but it's giving that idea sort of brought out with the general procedures. The bars. Complaint process. Again, this is going to be kind of a problem for our administration. Because the one of the things frankly that we're struggling with is if this is sort of quasi judicial kind of a thing.
Quasi.
Yeah, right. We're sort of still unclear sort of what our code implications are because I don't know if we can.
That should pretty much defines what that.
Yeah, okay. We'll have to review this. I think that I think this is referring to CGS seven dash one forty-eight H. Not the that's the uh. We may we may be very aware of that because the ordinance was established under the uh under the con um provisions of CGS seven dash one forty-eight H. So again, we're not lawyers. We're reading statutes and legalese, and we did that.
Well, yeah, and you know, I I do want to comment. The work, I think you guys have done, put in tremendous effort. It's really appreciated. I know in the very beginning, you brought in more than one expert just to get yourselves caught up on what the heck you're allowed to do and how to do it, and just to learn and work. Um I I think you guys did, you know, did a lot, put a lot of work, put a lot of time in. It's very much appreciated. I'm surprised to hear that. I kind of believe you. I always thought it was going to be a lot of work. Taking it on. It is a lot of work. This is not something that's that should be taken lightly, and I appreciate it, but you guys didn't. This is something that's that's going to be the rules of our town. And um and as such, you know, they should be they should be paid attention to.
So that's this is so this is the draft, you know, the complaint form here, advise your opinions, that type of thing again. Uh we've given you sort of our existing draft. You can mind this draft, this draft. It's still it's still a little rough. We're we're refining this. I like the idea of lifting that out of the code so we can change this over time without having to rerate that.
Right.
Um and the other thing we did, and I think I think it was an old saber. We called it the citizens' guide. To the deeper toward of ethics and ethics, and this is attempting to explain and.
Less legal, looser.
What this is. What constitutes ethics, ethics violation, how you how to go about filing a complaint. So, you know, if somebody's mad that their suit might have been on for four months, they don't file, you know, ethics complaint because that's really not an ethics violation. So it basically talks to you through what it is. Um they thought this was this was a good thing to have as a reference and reference material.
Yeah, I think that's a great act, great idea. To let people have a place to to go to to try and figure out.
So this is sort of a way to issue the worst work working through this one as well. And you know, the last piece, and I didn't I didn't end stuff, this is just a this is just a complaint one uh proposal. So. What we do, so basically name, address town. And we're asking, we're asking the the plaintiffs to identify, you know, the section, the sections of the code. So anyway, you you've got.
Are you ready? Um is this ready? Are are two things that's been candidates to us right now, the code and the uh? Draft procedure?
I think.
Is that ready for me to send that over to town council to review?
I think the code gets the general procedures. Because town council's already reviewed the general procedures. There's some things that you need to take.
And I'll send that over tomorrow.
I didn't want to take up tremendous amount of time.
Well, I appreciate the effort you guys have put in. I've been personally curious as to how it's going in all X. Yeah. Appreciate. I can I can appreciate the work going from zero zero to hundred, you know, trying to trying to do the hundred right, you know.
Yeah, I I'm glad that you came in. Um I know you lied to a couple of weeks ago, and it was pretty good night. I appreciate you waiting a couple of weeks. And I I will send over the code to Jane to to review and get some comments. We'll get that back.
I can give you a top copy as well if that would be better.
I'll ask her. I'll I'll ask. Um one question I have for you, again, no offense to anybody, but because that code is not it's not labeled as draft, and it's not. It's not a finished code. Should it go out? To the public for review? My only inclination is unfinished copy should not. But I I think it's your guys' code. So I I think unfinished copies just lead to.
Yeah, I would. I mean, so I think the other two documents have draft on it, but the code is out first. I mean, we think it's close, but it was I I got home from Minnesota last night. I wondered.
Yeah, I I think if you guys. Yeah, I I appreciate it. I think it's like.
The ones that say draft on, you can.
No, it's understandable. It's not it's not a document.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're talking about Veterans Day. It bears my father.
Appreciate the service. You're a fewer.
Well, you left it below. Uh serving as a tackle assistant in China for two years.
Deep River lost its last World War Two veteran last of that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So there's no more World War Veterans that can be.
They're dead here now. Are there any that were from Deep River?
Well, he was not originally from. Also, to like the I I say that there is going to be a uh parade on Lynch Hill on Sunday at one o'clock in the Patrick Church.
For the memorial.
For Memorial Day, they go to Sophie's. And there is going to be a parade of Memorial Day uh people. And it's going to be starting off at ten o'clock instead of nine o'clock. Irene is in England until late twenty-eight. She had a hard time getting that.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Luther, very much. Appreciate the efforts and the report, the update. Um, next item on the agenda is appointments. Plan and zoning commission of Alexander Strobel is an alternate member. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. Um, we'll come up to regular member as his normal procedure, uh, the term to expire twelve one twenty-two. Uh, we have Fred Jordan has applied and requested to be put on as an alternate member on terms of expired twelve one twenty-three. Uh, we tabled this a couple of weeks ago on this.
Yeah, I I always want to on the table because I want to. Do a little more research. Um, I've had two very lengthy conversations with Fred. Um. I've never really knew Fred. A pleasure talking to him. That's no look better. I know. Talked to the gentleman that I asked the table before I spoke. I feel comfortable in Fred Jordan to plan his own.
Want to make a motion? Do you want to make a motion for both?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion for planning zone for Alexander E. Walt Strobel, regular member, term to expire twelve one twenty-five two. And Frederick E. Jordan, alternate member, term to expire twelve one twenty-three.
I second that. All any discussion? All those in favor? You opposed? All right. That's it. We got board of finance shopping at the bit. So motions would adjourn.
Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. This is Tuesday, April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. First item on our agenda was called order. The second item on our agenda would be the approval of several meetings arbitrarily on well. Let me read the meetings and then we can decide whether we wish to do it mass or individually, but with the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of March. The joint session we held on March thirty-one with the selection and the budget workshop held on the twenty-ninth. Of March, April fifth, April twelfth, and April nineteenth, all of which were sent to you. Last week or at least sequentially over the last month. So. You wouldn't add when anyone make a motion.
We'll make a motion if you accept the minutes of all of those meetings as you just.
And thank very much. Those in favors, please say aye. Thank you. Next item, audience of citizens. You're none greater, you're only citizen. If you're you would share for at least some of the past. Uh, that's it. Sharing wisdom for the citizens. Uh, Tom, it is uh your turn to give us a update on the present report and that stuff.
I think she emailed everyone. I just uh just looking at the general planning council. So her compared to last month. Yeah, I think it's twenty-seven. So. It needs to be transfers this month. It's seven hundred fifty thousand. Year fourteen, six hundred thousand. Thirty thousand. Transfers were only at two hundred thousand. I told you. There it is. Last month we were eighty million six seven one. To prepare to last year, where we were before twenty sixteen, twenty-one. I know it's seven eight thousand. It's just a million two oh one three twenty of last year. The positive side, uh, we subtract our American Rescue Plan Act, our cost. Six fifty-seven, seven, seven, two. By one three five thirty-seven. Our education and equalization grant minds the E C S E C S bodies. We receive April currently as we get one half of our total. So we'll keep receiving eight hundred thirty-five thousand seventy. Uh, so this is the last one from this year that next month we do. Next is October, October twenty-nine. We did receive two surplus checks from the regional school district in the four. Two hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred six. Was it a supervision? This is one hundred forty-three thousand dollars. So if we need to see. Pretty interesting to see what our debt service is for the town of Deep River, our bond issues. We have four of them right now. The one is was the urban urban street sewer project, uh, which was uh opened in two thousand sixteen, the seventh two thousand sixteen. For two million and ten thousand forty years. Twenty sixteen, probably since in this. Uh, we have the annual payment of principal interest payment, one hundred eighteen thousand three seventy-nine. In December, uh, we made forty. We made six payments for the payment to our balance. That is two thousand six eighty-eight, seven twenty-six. Second, we have an extra with USDA. The state department. Well, the second was the current university sewer project expansion. It was opened down June twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, six hundred five thousand. Two point three thousand interest for four years. We have an annual payment of principal interest of twenty-three thousand ninety-nine. Uh, these are all part of the other boxes that's paid. So we have thirty-five payments remaining and ten pounds principal balances five sixty-five, seven fifty-four. And we have the one where the Deep River Elementary School, uh, that opened in July twenty nineteen, two thousand sixteen. Principal was twenty-eight thousand five seven one. Just a two plus seven five over seven. Seven years as we got that. We owe uh we the principal of the. Last seven months. We made two payments. Fifty total of fifty-seven thousand five forty-five. We should also have. We're doing a municipal energy upgrade, uh, that is for two hundred eighty-two thousand. In ten years, two point seven five percent fixed rate. That principal is twenty-eight thousand two hundred dollars a year. That's due on August fifteenth. Two years. Again, I think it's just an overview of our debt service. So that's it.
That's my point. And Derek, soon we will be digging on one additional one. When's the first sewer bomb roll off from the jerk? You ready?
Yeah. We only made uh. Six uh six payments. So we have thirty-four, thirty-four.
The Union Street is that? Union Street?
Exactly.
No. That's the one we did in seven, six states. The Union Street has rolled off. That's it. Okay.
Yeah, we have the current Silver Street Silver and then we have the current Silver Street Silver Project Expansion.
Is there any thought to just wiping up, you know, paying off that little twenty-eight thousand dollar one, sort of carrying it on?
You've got twenty-eight thousand dollars to shoot.
It just seems like a very small opportunity.
Certainly.
At the time, it probably wasn't. It's still still.
All right, the next item would be a recommendation of selectmen's actions. Do you have anything?
Um, as far as in our regular budget, not. What do we get ready for actions? And we're starting to order some parts and things like that. So we'll be um. We'll give some financial. But uh we do have one thing up the transfer station. Um, the recycling bin or the carter bin. Um, bottom is kind of. So we need to replace that over here. I don't think we care. It's just probably in the area. Eight to a thirteen thousand dollar expenditure. But it's something that's.
Is that the only one of the what three, four?
Yes. And that. That's so far as I can tell. I know we replaced it a couple uh couple of years ago. Um, we need to close and get some moves or seeing the moves on.
Actually, I saw it. I was like the. Yeah, it's not. Not very good.
Yeah. Uh, so that's it for the current budget right now.
It is time to talk about the proposed budget. Next one will be I would you up or lead us through? You and I met on Friday. I said, we can. Can you sequence the conversation or just go straight to the most current?
You know, in the whole preparation of the budget, we we were anticipating by nine. Well, we had we we got to the telephone. So please help. Not anything. So we were continuing to to work with that. We did did something uh last Friday, Thursday, Friday. That threw it and. This I usually run a follow-up. I basically. And it ended up showing zero percent increase, but it's supposed to hold the promise. Jumpers away. But I needed to put that. Reality is checking that out today and uh really this afternoon. It it's really an eleven percent increase. So. We put that and put that money back. So it's a lot of fifty. Fifty-seven hundred dollars more than we maybe fifty-two hundred dollars more than we anticipated up until Friday. But it does, you know, it's it is only.
So the uh the number uh in health insurance, line two ninety-eight, oh, you don't have line numbers. That you will see that Joyce here is handing out or did hand out will have a. Insurance dollar amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. About eleven seconds. Um, from five, well, just last time we looked at it. And why don't you just comment to look at all for us. There's you have had estimates done on the new road up the transfer station for the.
Yes, uh, you were you were being conservative. Apparently you're being too conservative. Well, you you see, that's uh all that.
So passing off some disappointing news or happy news, but that puts us to one of our favorite spots. The first page of our budget. And let's look under. Proposed budget. The shortfall. I have to get to the right place. Sorry. The shortfall, I hope you can create this sentence. Well, I'm sorry. Russell, would you read the shortfall in front of you while I. For the shortfall. Yes, all right. Um. That is the shortfall, which right now we are saying we will fund with our surplus. Uh, I'm getting to here. Um. We would call on the surplus. I'm getting there. Um. It's. Um. Still the wrong button. Sorry. Uh, so what is going to happen? Will you read that with two million one?
Nine hundred five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. That's right.
That is correct. Here is a number that I would like to use as a focal point. Um, we have had conversations. Let's go a big deal. Let's work. We've had conversations. Those who offer advice to us suggest that an adequate surplus is between twelve and fifteen percent. Uh, coming out of the last uh audit, we overshot that surplus or fifteen eight three. Um. Current draw on the surplus would mean we were under. Serving under meeting the twelve percent we have talked about. What is the number?
Eleven point three eight percent.
Three eight percent. So. Anywhere involved in here, people can make this a question. Are you comfortable eleven point three eight percent? If you're asking me, I'm leaning towards a no, but that's just one opinion. I would now like to introduce to you, we have chat talked about reducing the middle rate by point six. If we reduce the middle rate by point. Five. Bring that to eleven point six six percent. What does anyone think is the proper thing to do? What criteria does people do people wish to use to decide on? I think budget is budget. What we're talking about here is how much of a surplus, how much of a tax deduction to provide? Anyone wish to have a conversation?
May I say?
Please.
Uh, the difference between point six of a mill reduction. And point five of a bill production is about fifty-five thousand even because of the. In the grand scheme of things, in our town budget, it's not a lot of money. However, it does put some money back. Into our general fund and it does raise that percentage. Think closer to twelve percent, which is where we like to be. We are still reducing our middle rate from the from where it is currently. To where it would be next year at that point. We would be reducing the middle rate by a half. I don't think that's pretty good.
Well, that's going to reduce the middle. We'll use it by one mill.
We're going from point six to minus one.
We would.
The smoke starts coming out of bugs.
We would have a budget shortfall, one point three million uh. You would have surplus of one point six million. And you would have you would be at about eight point five percent surplus to your budget. Don't hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, no. I made that. It was wrong. Yes, six fifty-five. All right. We would have a surplus. We would have to draw upon our surplus, nine hundred forty-five thousand dollars. And we'd have a surplus of one point. Nine million dollars and we'd be down to a percent surplus as a percent of budget of ten point twos. The recommendations, let's set one of the recommendation is to. Have a surplus in relationship to your expenditures of well, fifteen. I'm always uncomfortable with that because we play the fact to. Uh, yes, we have, yes. And and again, I just, this year has been a more pleasant year to live with since we have had a. An adequate surplus. an adequate surplus. He's been much more comfortable to make decisions about things that were not budgeted. Saying, I, this is for all of us.
I would add to Jack, if you, uh, you, you notice, we, we spend about a mill and a half a month. In November, maybe, maybe one point six. And so, our, um. I think two point two mil, uh, two point two million. Six weeks worth, in, in, in entire stretch.
I need making focus, I need making a talk.
I think it's a point five. Health, special loss. Puts you over the twenty nine, where we get to, you know, feel psychologically.
Twenty nine is better than twenty nine.
Alright. My brother know that.
So, correct, I want to say it, I want to say it to say.
We've been routinely over the years, the price of surplus has been more than what we've got. So it's entirely possible that.
So with two months left, budget, I'm sorry, two months left of budget, the two point nine could change, is what you're saying?
Let's start a good moment, we'll look at the budget.
Uh, we think that possibility is going to be these large baskets.
No, no. It's, it's not, it's not a term of.
It's breathing.
We've got one more, three year, year anticipate, it's still.
That's correct.
I know nobody else.
Well, I suppose.
You do.
Yes.
It's not fixed number yet.
Yeah, no, that's not true.
Okay, good, I may just say the same thing. The number, when you see a name or, you know, we have three point five. We have up in a contingency, a number that puts us to a higher. One that is potentially within the, uh, the agreement area, but yes, you're right.
And put point three in there, right?
You're reading, what's, 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 what's four, what's the dollar around there comes in?
And I think, what's your opinion, Shane, is it what I, you were putting fifteen two and five?
And I am made sport, that's point six. I'm not sure we can finish again, but, but they were just giving back what you have. Yeah. Our budget assumes almost at three point five and then it intentionally reflects what the, sort of what the union is looking for now and still includes point six.
Yeah, that's what it contains equals four and a half.
We most part of it doesn't want to probably talk too much about, about let Angus take the lead.
Yeah, we're in negotiations. Yes, he was for the union. No, they, they. They're actually the increase.
It was down all the fourteen four years.
It's a fuck from.
Jackie Carmelo, do you wish, just to say to the. All right. Carmelo?
This is it.
I, I don't.
We have another name at all. You have. There's a great deal on here for that. Go on, yes. Uh, so if I was to read the group, which never, that was a huge bit of having skill. I have two who wish to hold at, go down to half a mil or something and two that wish to stay at point six. And feeling that I want to put first here, I assume you would be more comfortable with point six than uh, any other.
I mean, more comfortable with point six than one five.
All right. The one, one. I've asked you that way, and you've taken all the pressure off, say, I do not have to do it with the best people what they want said. Uh, I need a most, who sent this budget to the town Thursday night? In that budget, there would be an indication of the current thinking of the board of finance would be to provide a tax related to the citizens and at a number of, anyone can throw a number in, but I believe we are at point, a point six reduction is what I will tell the town on Thursday night. All those who voted please, uh, well, we'll do, all those who voted say aye, they didn't do the discussion, so which, all those who voted. I got it. Any additional discussion? Now, may, well, no, no, I was hoping. We haven't. Oh, all of this, we don't think all of them do today. All, all those who voted, we got, any, again, say aye. Don't, may, okay, two, alright, two names. Alright, additional discussion, we, the motion carries, we pay more time all the day. Is that, ironically, it does, but that is one of the flaws in gays and gays, isn't it? Uh, does anyone wish to, uh, convince, if you need to prove it or again? Absent no one wishing to convince us to do otherwise, uh, we'll take the final vote. Go to, well, I need a discussion, right?
We voted.
We voted, we already talked about motions.
The mo, the motion should have been made then discussion, then the vote.
We need to vote, right?
You make a motion, it's not gonna, then we can discuss.
That's what we're doing, is that what?
You did, you did it, you did it, right.
Alright, hopefully the, uh, those who keep track of what we did will forget all this confusion out there.
This, discussion.
Discussion again?
Yes, that's.
They, they were winning, stop further, stop further. Uh, vote on that, or just discuss? Does anyone wish to discuss John's motion and?
Why is my decision with it, I think that's stated that border, I'll state it then. I don't think it makes any sense to use about a point six percent. Because I think that year we're going to be asking people, and even more than they're paying this year. So I think keeping the budget where it is addresses the surplus also. What we may be anticipating from the negotiations. I think keeping the budget as it is saves us, probably, thanks.
Very, it's great wisdom in trying to keep things watching. You'll, you will still operate a.
We're out, we're out of this exact measure. I feel so, so, I should get a break, they do whack every year.
I will offer that among those getting whacked as a phrase. Alright.
I just wanted to share that I think by reducing by point six, it will offset for most people in town, their increase in their car taxes. So otherwise their taxes are not this year. Um, because of the increase in the cost. So I just think this is going to sort of develop level plan. I don't know how that will be next year, but as long as you have passed.
I think those are, those are interesting, staying down better than up, it definitely went fast to down everybody. But I think that we know, just in the world that we live in, this is not new to now, this is things get more expensive a year, salaries go up, most of the year.
Mine doesn't.
Yeah. The, the point being, based on that, the only way to reduce taxes is to reduce services. Um, and, and I think we did that for a long time and we spent a long time trying to get services back to what it should be, where we came in it should be. I think we have a lot of, for the needs to drop, and a little bit, and not suffer. Carmelo, I agree, flat is, is the best. But, you know, the heck, like, like we said last week, that to me, I think you need your budget for what your needs are now for, to, to sell, philosophy. So. Increased evaluations, that was not reflected with the mill rate reduction from last year.
Yeah.
Who had it hasn't already, uh, one, two. It gets us closer, it's closer, but yeah.
As usual, we're all a lot of agree, and that's fine.
Hmm.
But we have a sort of compromise, but it's worked out. That makes no one have to go with it, and everyone didn't get exactly what they wanted.
Alright, it is Thursday night, get this to the town.
Now you gotta vote.
Get the vote again? John has to vote. Alright, so the table, we had discussion.
Yeah.
Alright, all those who voted of taking this budget and the reduction of point six mils to the town on Thursday night, please say aye. All those, yes, when they get to the town, they, I did qualify with point six reduction. Please say nay.
Nay.
Nay, alright. Here's, we will take this budget with a point six reduction. Tuesday night, uh, I remind you, the help of Joyce, that we have a meeting scheduled for after presentation on Thursday night. And we will hear what is said and we will once again make a decision. Next time we have to send it to printing newspaper, uh, in preparation for the actual town meeting on the sixth.
Yeah, well, as soon as we get done on Thursday. And we, next year, we will get a post our, I wish to get the. And just we'll go on the website, um, tomorrow.
So anyone will be able to see our proposed budget as of tomorrow.
Yeah. Yep.
Alright, the next item on our agenda. Uh, I sent to you a letter from the tax collector asking for authority to put the get him on the dollar note. Uh, her recommendation, so I would like a recommendation to put what she is asking. Yeah, I guess it should recommend, like, the actual dollar, but should, no. I should have put that more than that.
It was about thirteen thousand dollars. Yeah, it was a number.
Oh, good, so, uh, and that is what I wish. No. What was it?
It was fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty second motor vehicle, and thirty one thousand one twelve eighty five.
Forty six thousand forty. Um. Someone made a motion that we accept the uh, recommendation of the tax collector to place forty one thousand.
One hundred and fifteen dollars.
No, one, four, six. Uh, I move it to suspense list.
Wow.
The suspense list, so it comes out of being reflected as potential cash down and goes into another list while she will keep it private, does not reflect it as what we think was available.
Do we know how many is on that list? Year after year, is there a toll of that? Twenty six thousand is your, is that someone?
Yeah, it's someone.
Yes.
What's that? General recommendation, take those assets to auction. And tell them. I believe she has sent most of them already for the connection.
He's going to continuously try that.
Yes. It's excellent, we have never auctioned them all, that's an excellent one, we have used.
What would you auction for, went to auction?
Oh, no, 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 not property, you're talking about singles. They're going to sell, she's got. They're, they're still on the list, they're still receivable. Oh, and that's not, that's not the suspense list, they stay on the receivable list. Those people are still on the receivable list.
This is, this is still on there.
There will be receivable list, you come off the beach, collect your money. If we sell your house, we have comfort that we collected, get cash. So it stays on the receivable list, this goes suspension, so just like our receivable on the count.
Well, we're not just increasing the suspending list.
I don't understand. We don't, that could happen anyhow, they're already on the receivable. We're not taking them off of our receivable list. They stay along. Yes, please answer, that number is big one, I've not voted.
So should we make a motion to this person and discussing it?
Yes.
Alright, so I make a motion that we authorize the tax collector to take forty six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars off of the collectible tax?
Receivable.
Receivables and put it into a suspense list? So what taxes?
You say it, thank you. Now, we discuss. Is that? Does anyone wish to discuss this first?
What man says she used to collect the taxes that.
As she puts in her letter, if you know, she has used all kinds, she has had, uh, uh, agencies go J C M, but she's used all kinds of internet searches, Google searches, and that, uh, to try and identify these people. Uh, and they're.
It's the status of people who moved out.
Yes, moved out, moved out, yes, those got a lot of problems, that is correct, and, yeah. Yes, moved out of states, so we have no way to do that. Maybe she can have a little bit of license, and that, that, and your vast web.
Okay, moved out, and the house was abandoned, right?
A house?
It was a big fire.
No, they're still driving into someone's.
I just direct, you're driving, they're still running, ah. Somewhere else.
In Florida. In Florida. We don't want to look at the list.
Bottom order. Did mine? She's still crying.
She's still crying.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money for people who have skipped out a hundred dollars or so taxes from forty six thousand dollars.
Two thousand four.
Forty six thousand one hundred and fifty.
Was the total? What was the?
And personal property taxes thirty one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and eighty six. You have it.
You know, with personal property is most of that comes from. What is the factory up on Bridge Street? They will, people will hire them to do a press for them. And that press is owned by the firm. Their logo or something is owned by the firm in another state. Uh but it's still here in Deep River. It's taxable personal property. And she is trying to get in touch with these people. Many of them are still in business. Now, yeah, can we take a vote? Get lost. Okay. John doesn't have to do anything against. Well, all those in favor of following the recommendation of tax collector and moving whatever the dollar amount to pull it out to a suspense, like moving them out of receivables. Uh into a suspense list, please say ah. All right, it is time to look at. All right. Our third.
Here, ten minutes.
Anyone understand that?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I received yours. I received everybody's.
Well, we'll make.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Did you look in your junk mail?
Yeah.
Cause I can think I don't get things at all. Joyce will send me things. I go into junk mail substrate here. Katie says there's something.
Uh I did point out to you because they're not recommendations, but. You will notice the only thing in this. That we that jumps out at me, we're all aware of. But it's it's becoming a bigger issue. It's on the police line. Very overspent on vehicle maintenance. Now, a particular car is doing some considerable trouble. Sure, we want to. Another donation from Wayland is generous as they have been over the years. Many purchase a car. The the conversation is going to be whether we do that or not. But that's I think that's. It's going to come soon.
How much would some car?
I think. And whether would your benefits? Well. I'm looking for.
Or sixteen, what's this? Fifty one eighty three over grand hall.
Yeah, and it's in the driver's right now, so.
You think we will deal with that next month? And here's my. Probably expect that some surplus current question. I'm going to estimate on Thursday night, nineteen forty, nineteen fifty five now. As Bill says, potentially others. We may be able to bring ourselves to it this year.
We can if 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 you were inclined to think that way, I I will do some more examination. So that next month be. Used to like much to. Our oldest cars are two thousand.
How old is the woman that's on top?
Anyone having votes? Fifty thousand dollars by the way, they choose a point six to a point five enough to be a visit. Somewhere you gotta come up with these dollars. Can't take them out of our surplus.
Yeah, we we can use.
I have no problem using ARCA. Like most border finance people around the state, they all they want to use ARCA for everything. Uh there's other objectives. Okay.
Now, how many ARCA money? How much of the portions for capital? The ARCA money.
Yes.
So that would fall.
This would fall in the gap.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at something just um pointed out. That in tax and insurance, we did give a six point four. On cyber.
Uh with as far as budget, you said you couldn't do much until the budget is approved. I think this is the last.
Well, remember we tried to get them so we could. Yeah. Okay, so it's effective from. Now until October. And it'd be a nine thousand six hundred dollar. Premium. Right. So. That's something we talked about. Sorry. So that's the number nine thousand five hundred and eighty seven. We talked about that they. Proposed a year long. Yeah, like your. To increase their side of insurance. That. Would. Corrode across. With anything. It also didn't make sense for me to do that. Right before we go to a budget year, so I mean, ask them if they can give us a six point four. Or something else that number one, use the amount of money that you need. But also pass it to someone so then you can know that it's going to be. Next year. So we can budget for it. And if this is the case. I think we're probably in the right spot. We're in the right spot, but. But this is something that. I apologize. I mean, it did not come out for our patients, but. And it's something that we should talk about. Angela, you could absolutely. Increase our. Our insurance to our additional. Our security. Media them as bad as my state need to do it.
So the only we want us to authorize and up to nine thousand dollars by insurance. Be it like through October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nine thousand five hundred and thirty seven.
Until October. Border finance has any desire, any disagreement right now, which means we have the authority to authorize nine thousand. Bottom, anything over ten, those days, we are well within our. People wishing to buy insurance now, but. Or wait until a budget is approved.
What what is this? What is the status of the insurance if we don't do it? We don't have any? Okay, that's what I'm that's part of.
That makes sense.
If we're budgeting, then we're going to start. That's correct.
That's why we're asking now. We just you guys just authorized that. To increase our passes. It makes sense to me to follow that up.
What makes a little awkward is we're buying insurance in this current year, which goes into the next fiscal year, which we have budgeted for, which ARCA will. I don't know what that means.
Like it's be something that started in October and August. There with date July, so we know that's going.
In that first.
I don't now if October will give us that opportunity to.
And we can start the budget. Okay, this is sort of one year's. All right, so I've got John, who has at least suggested it's a good idea. Anyone wish to further the conversation? John, were you making motion? You're excited, so excited about the site.
I'm I'm in motion up to ninety five or I think it's you say ninety six. I've already remarked to buy cyber insurance uh from now through October.
And I have a second.
First, second, discuss it.
All right. Discussion. Anyone wish to discuss this in more detail? This is good. All right. I hear. I don't need another motion. All right, all those in favor of authorizing this letter to buying uh insurance immediately. October, please say ah. All right, thank you. Well done. All right, we are. Something else pops in. You are ready. I bought a new almost bought a new truck. It wants insurance. All right, certain things can be said. Um we are in this report suggestion or through the end of October, act that ends. Uh October, uh April, April, excuse me. Uh April is the tenth month, the twelve months, so we should see about eighty three percent of everything spent. If everything was in a straight line, which you are, leaving us about seventeen percent left. Uh if we use that as the criteria to identify what's of interest, um not much in selectments, like there's about thirty one percent. That's in their budget. Anyone see anything in select?
We got the point one.
That is correct. All the way down the bottom, yeah, that it seems to be. That's and it does seem to be, this was the first conversation before, it seems to me that we should generate. I'm assuming there is a surplus, um but the magnitude of do not. I think I'm estimating about ninety five, but to. We just spent dead. So um anyone else of any? I see town hall operations. We have overspent our fuel budget, because I'm not particularly surprised. Uh more to be bought, I guess, I assume.
Yes, um certainly, I I don't anticipate we're going to do too much.
Why is that you want?
That is the as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, we are, you know, we are benefiting from that. I mean, it's all the. Gasoline and we are in that. That's about that for town to rise.
We overspent by four thousand already. Are we limited on how much we can overspend that going to come in?
I don't know the answer to that as long as you heard my. In the line and in the budget, I don't believe.
You'll fix it.
Yeah. That's what we've done the best.
I haven't. Well, that's my thing. What are you going to do? I don't work straight. Can't go over ten. You have no idea? Until well after the fact, that's true. All right. So certainly we are aware that you are probably most likely focused on that long enough. And I said, and again, I do believe there's enough excess dollars in the budget to cover an over spending.
That was a big, that's a big number. I'm actually going to check that because we were nowhere near. Over expending last month.
No, we were not.
You know, so I'm going to check that and make sure that that's proper. Didn't jump out at me um when I looked at these. Are we going to have to go so?
Um.
Can we start on border finance?
And indeed, I have. We have a part one for itself. Yes.
Uh we'll we'll find. In the budget, the new budget that we're supposed to make up next year, that was on forty five because of. I think because it is. Being given a raise like all of the numbers, is that the way we always have handled it?
Yes. Um always is awkward since we had lower rate, we get a place over a hundred dollars. That is, I believe, I'm old enough to say, if there is secretarial support or support for a a board to get the three and a half percent.
I think we would add a little. It just looks weird because it it goes up to fifteen, sixteen, three.
Yeah, get it in a lot of.
Yeah, and we're seeing.
Yes, is the answer. Did anyone else, anyone could flag questions as we go through, like the special services, copy or service. Newsletter uh who have overspent newsletter. That get that expense.
So that newsletter expense was from this year's expenses? The five thousand dollar increase we did on the newsletter?
Second years. Proposed. In, no, well, in the proposed budget, you can see one over by about what, four thousand dollars?
So we off that plus.
No, that's correct. Yes. Good.
Well, that would not consider it already. That almost got to be not there.
Oh, I got.
You put five thousand to it. Man, this is it's an awkward, it's an interesting loss. Most of the. Not especially the way with blood, but revenues are also going up. Kind of like Parkinson's.
We need to.
We guess. We increase the revenues, we charge more. Did we increase the numbers at this point? I don't think so. No, we didn't.
Police Department, we were talking about that we're over 20 minutes. Further, just going further, thankfully, we're
Yeah.
I know we have out city, but their votes would be in Bellbeard.
Well, I think if my, mine has been
But I would be in uniform, so that seems big. Alright, highway department, tell us about the highway. I suspect highway department is slightly over. Sandy gravel, we talked about that. Tendency is going to be wiped out. Pre removal is over. Motor vehicle maintenance is supposed to fly. Yeah, leaning towards that we will go marginally over of that budget.
My sure you move over, that's great soul.
I guess.
What?
Yeah, I heard you. I heard John trying to get the answer to you. And I can honestly say why it's over, other than, I think it got, and I think you'll probably see next week that it's not. That's not, because that is a six number, it shouldn't go.
Was you reporting now until the guy stopped talking?
Well, right, but you know, if that means he's only going for a third of the day, or two thirds of the day.
Was that a contract or a number?
My guess is, Bill, that something was put in there that was supposed to It is not, he's not doing any more clearing until next year, know that. And I would suggest that it's more than likely it was something like
How about parks and rivers? Maintenance, all facilities, inside and outside. They're over as well. We've got, is that I assume it's time to do maintenance, but that seemed like a lot quicker.
Can we just go back to Please, we've got over on Salt Sand, just another year, but it's safer.
This was the more than we spent over the past couple of years. I think, I think if they're contracted, it's going to probably steer, it's going to bring us along.
Can we categorize this year as a snowing year?
Well, in many ways, yes. There were not more snow, but there were longer there were more storms, and they were longer, and we just had to spread them all.
Alright.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's where the salary got bad, because they're probably installed on a
When did they start filling in holes when those?
They have been bold matching, right now. I think the plan is for next week, yeah.
I think three.
Oh, you know what? They just pulled past that two weeks ago, and they pulled past two weeks prior to that, so I'll let them know again, it just keeps
Yeah, that's why we need to get, get out of there.
Yeah, the nice small school.
I think there's some rain.
Actually, maybe you should please go slowly down.
We need a couple on Main Street to make Mike's
Alright, let's go to elementary school. They got 22.19% left. Nice. They make, they draw as they need, as opposed to the regional school which draws even later. I'm going to be surprised if they have a few dollars left, but we shall soon. Regional school will always take down, give it back to us of labor budget. Capital, does anyone have any questions on capital? Alright. Anyone wish to turn to revenues? I think we're doing pretty well in revenue. So we're doing, I think we're doing okay with revenues. If you look, we've got less than 1% of the tax revenue outstanding. So that should creep in. And look at the interest of leagues, it's almost like we're way over. We budgeted 5586, over $86,000 of interest. Motor vehicle supplement, we budgeted under, we have 146. We didn't raise that as well, next year's proposed budget. If you look at building permits, it's up by 37, 38,000 dollars. Conveyance tax, we budgeted 40, it's up to 63. So people are coming to town. And Tom just told us that education is coming in, so we take that question off. I guess I see we are still unre, pretty serious. We have not yet received closer. We've spent it, we haven't received it yet, it's coming in soon. I do point out with the telecom, telecom properties, we budgeted 75, we've got not where do we budget? The Indians are letting us down. We budgeted four, 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 five, they're going to give us three, but I think that comes sequentially as well. Came in only once, or you Oh, I thought that, oh, so it's based on last year. So we have a
The Indian money?
And merely for conversation, like several, police, look, we budgeted, we budgeted 30,000 in expenses. We budgeted 40,000, because we charged in excess. We have received today 117,000 dollars. We spent 83 over on the expense side, so but what we do not know is we pay social security, we pay pensions, and a few other things, and car maintenance, so it is a story, it's just a story that, you know. Alright, revenue seems to be adequate, and also nothing that we should be concerned about as anywhere else does. And those, I think all the exciting part were leading though. Does anyone have any other, at least, where not? Public theory is that seven on Thursday, where finance will add a useful sixth in the premise. Alright, unless anyone, my motion to adjourn, so Bill, a second discussion, more of a, let's go straight, let's approve.